Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Warren White.
Heavenly Father, as we soak in your word and promise, we ask for the strength, encouragement, and comfort as we go about our day. Please nudge us with a little reminder that you are with us each and every moment, regardless whoever may be against us. May we truly know you as the Lord of our life and just name and pray. Amen.
Amen.
I present these pages to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marcock.
Here.
Councilmember Warren White.
Here.
Councilmember Troy Como.
Here.
Councilmember David Merrill.
Here.
Councilmember Ron Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Dole.
Thank you. Any public comment cards? All right, here are none. I always remind people to put your phone on silent. Madam Clerk, item two A.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of August 2nd, 2025, which will be published on August 20th, 2025.
I need a motion.
So moved.
So moved. And Councilman Warren White, is there any discussion or comments of our meeting of August 2nd? Am I good? Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, three A.
Resolution number 2590, a resolution in support of the enactment of Iberia Parish Government Ordinance Number 2025-075372, related to renewable energy power plants dated July 23rd, 2025.
Thank you. This item is that we would show some solidarity with the parish and has a resolution in support. It's only in support. We have, you know, no real power in this or no real liability in this, but it shows support. And the school board has done it. Lauraville did it last night. I think that it's a way to be united on a tough issue. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
So just to back up with Freddie said, you know, I asked Freddie to put this on the agenda, but you know, if we, as elected officials, see a city that wants to grow and eventually annex and all cities grow or you die on the vine, then we need to protect our perimeters from encroachment. And I think that the parish council went through a long ordeal. There was some residents' comments and came up with a resolution. Is it perfect? Probably not, but it does protect the residents. It protects the land around us so we can expand because if they would encroach on that, it would landlot the city. And if all of y'all were paying, watching the news today, today USDA announced that they're no longer going to fund any solar, any green energy, solar or wind farms through federal government funding on any productive farmland. So that tells you, we making the right decision moving forward because we need to protect the way Americans farm and who feeds our kids on our table. And this is just a good resolution. It'll probably be contested in some way or form, but I think that at the end of the day, it protects the majority of the voices of our residents in their homesteads and I'm gonna support it tonight.
Any other comments or discussion? Am I good? Then, yes, ma'am. I need a motion.
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and a second. Councilwoman Brooke Marcock. No further discussion? Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Item 3B.
Resolution number 2591, a resolution authorizing the creation and implementation of the new Iberia Cutting Up Grass Cutting Program.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Councilman David Merrill and I think Councilman Troy Como had this second. Let me tell you about this. This is the plan that I told you I'd present quickly and that was last meeting. We are going to put up grass for auction by private contractors. We have a lot of requirements. But we met with Lafayette. We're going to subscribe to the same platform that they do. Abbeville does, Livingston, Louisiana does, some other cities, some other parishes. It's not a brand new thing, but it's pretty new. And that will give us the ability to cut lots faster. It will be a reverse auction, so I will start at what we charge people to cut the grass when we have to be their yard man. And then it will go in reverse. So that stops some maybe collusion issues that make sure that we're getting a good deal. And so people bid it down until, you know, the time runs out and that's the bid you go with. They have to be pre-qualified. There's a lot of insurance requirements. We, I love everybody, but we don't want people to go buy a lawn mower at Lowe's and start a new business. It needs to be people that have the, you know, the wherewithal, that can do it, that have the insurance, that, you know, already in that business. So they will be pre-qualified to get to the portal. Did you bring the little thing to click on? All right. And you can name it whatever you want. So we decided to name it New Iberia Cutting Up. And that's our little logo. So when you'll see that on the website, you'll be able to click on that and you'll be able to bid on the grass. So I think it's good. I think it's fun and we made up the logo. Is there any questions or comments on this? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you going through this effort. It's an ongoing problem that doesn't seem to have a fix any other way, so.
Not yet, sir.
Right. So I appreciate the effort and I'm gonna be supporting that tonight because I feel like we need to get these properties taken care of.
We do. Yes, sir.
I also think that this could possibly open the door for other avenues to do some other services down the road. This is very, you know, highly productive because I think that when you go out and pay how somebody do the work, you're gonna see where you're gonna get a little more productivity and we overwhelmed the work as it is. So I think it's a good.
Thank you. And the plan for that is, as you know, we are also doing that with some of the drain cleaning. And my goal is with the limited workforce that Public Works has, I want to hop up. My biggest pet peeve is the sewer patches. We have an ancient system. We break the road. We patch the sewer. We do wait 30 days because we don't want to patch the sewer, pour concrete and have to break it up again because that was happening. So we need to give the patch time to make sure that the sewer's not leaking, that we don't have an issue, and we need to let it pack. So we run around, we put limestone in it, but I get a lot of heat that people think that's part of our road program, okay? I had a gentleman yesterday. So those patches are taking too long, you know, 20 days is acceptable, 30 gets kind of questionable. We've got some that are 45 and 50 days. That's unacceptable. So my hope is by the drain cleaning, and it's not all the drain cleaning, but by having a maintenance crew and an aggressive crew that has handled our drainage, if we can get private contractors to bid and what I want them to bid on, what we're putting out there is all the private cuts. In other words, Public Works will still cut all the public areas, but one, they'll get to those quicker. Number two, I'm gonna free up a couple of people because they won't be cutting these private lots that can get on the patching in the road quicker. So it's a multifaceted thing that I'm hoping that we pick up some momentum in some other areas. Just to tell you. Yes, sir. Councilman?
Yeah, I agree on this also because I've got a lot of calls within the last week, this week actually, on properties that have grass on it and stuff like that, that been on the list for a while. And I ended up calling Joe on one of them and he took care of it for me, but their hands are real full on this. So I think this would be something that's good that we need, but we just have to make sure that the people that do bid on it and that take the job, make sure that they're responsible for other things outside of just cutting the grass.
Yeah, well, that's why they'll be pre-qualified and the piece of property will come up. There'll be a photograph of it. It'll be, they'll understand just what the boundaries are. We'll have a description of what we need done.
Right.
It will take a little while, a skinny minute to get used to the program. This is gonna run through compliance. So Matt and his people will be in charge of this. We do think it's, you know, nothing, it's not complicated, but it's something new. So I think it will take a little while, you know, to get implemented, but.
That's good because what you said about having Matt involved, that was my next thing because even though we hire these people and we take them on as a contract, they, we have to have somebody to follow up on them to make sure that they're doing it the right way and we don't have complaints, you know, complaints from some of our constituents and stuff in those areas.
You're exactly right. And I didn't tell you this yet, so I'll tell you tonight. TPR, who is part-time, works in compliance, as of new budget, will be full-time.
Okay.
Because again, I got other responsibilities. You put something new, you gotta back it up. So TPR will help with this and I think that gives Matt, you know.
Cool.
Another half a man.
That's good.
Okay. Councilman Ron Davis.
Yes, I think we're headed in the right direction because the grass cutting is a big ordeal. For a lot of people, get a lot of calls on the idea of the grass cutting, which of course I know we've taken pictures before and after.
Yes.
Will they be inclusive of maybe some shrubs and trees and stuff along that line also?
No trees, sir.
No trees.
They, we're not, you're not getting trees out of me. Look, my attorney's shaking his hand. But one thing that has not been done because it's just, I guess it's human nature. I see with my yard man. They cut, they cut and they get two or three inches from the fence and then, you know, a summer goes by, they're 10 inches from the fence. The next year comes and the grass starts growing again, they're two feet away from the fence. So we are gonna be able to tell them, I need you to edge up to the fence, which will greatly enhance the. We're not yardmen. We're not landscapers and we've always kind of said that from the time I was the pro tem. We're cutting a lot of grass. I don't think we should be cutting, you know, people are using us as their yard man. But we need to step it up a little bit. So the description will tell them, you know, what to trim and that kind of stuff. There'll be before and they're responsible for uploading the finished pictures. So to our website before they get paid, there's before pictures in our description. They cut the grass. They furnish pictures that the grass has been cut and then the program generates an invoice. So it's a pretty good little system that, you know, we don't have to work the kinks out of.
Well, I asked about that because like you alluded to the fence, you know, there are some weeds that grow as tall as trees, you know, and therefore it becomes another problem. Because I had a call this week about overhang on the next person's property.
Yes. I've had, that's why we do it. That's another reason we added that because I get that a lot.
Get that a lot.
All right, this side of the table. Councilman Warren White.
Well, I would be supporting it too because I'm always here turning in, but I stays in here.
You are, sir.
I'll do the week. I guess I'm a lawn man because I get calls about the grass. And people gotta realize, you know, once they turn it into me and I turn it to the city, it's a process. They think once I turn it in, it will be cut tomorrow or the next day. No, it just don't work that fast. It's a system they gotta go through before, you know, the grass get cut. It won't take a week or two, may take a few weeks.
30 days.
Yes.
Yeah, 30 days is the norm for that.
30 days and plus.
Time it can go over the 30 days.
Right. And that's what I don't want. So now we are changing that a little bit.
Okay.
Because we're gonna follow the state statute. Where it was 10 days is five days and where it was.
Six months.
Six months is 12 months.
That we can recut. So we're gonna, I don't know why we weren't following the state. I don't think that's anything new. So we are trying to speed that time up a little bit. So, did you have your hand up?
No, but I was about to. Sorry.
Yeah, the aspect here, not on this, but.
Okay, well, Councilman Brooke Marcock, then I'll come to you.
So I can't find it in the contract right now, but I thought I remember seeing that something about a year-long contract. Does that mean that whoever gets the lowest bid has that property, that one property for a year? No?
No, I don't think so. That's for the software.
The software. Okay, okay, gotcha.
That's a year contract that we will pay monthly like we do with so many other, you know, tech is great. You know, we found that out with the PD and the crime cameras and all the rest of that, but man, we, it hits our budget. We pay a lot of money in subscriptions, but you can't do without it.
So every time the yard comes up, because I know we have repeated offenders constantly.
Yes.
It'll be a new bid every single time?
Good question.
Or do you want to win the property? Okay.
We have the right to go recut it more often instead of, you know, and then we will use that right, but they're gonna have to bid on it again.
Okay.
Give an opportunity to someone else.
Yeah, because the same, he might cut it once, say, I don't want to do this one again, so we will have to rebid.
Okay, thank you.
So, so all the paperwork, appropriate paperwork for that particular property is gonna be handled before it goes off a bid?
Yes.
So when the bid, when the bid is awarded to that individual, he can go cut it. He don't have to wait the 10 days.
Right, right. The plan is when they bid, they'll be notified, they can go cut it. And then before they get paid, they gotta upload the pictures. We're gonna have, since we have another half of TPR, we're gonna send somebody to go and inspect it and then we can, the program generates the invoice and then we'll pay the invoice. They don't upload the pictures or it's not acceptable, they're not gonna get paid.
All right.
Somebody else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, we do have on section three, page one, contract term. It says that the contract begins on the effective date and expires on, and I think a date here should be stuck there. Section three on page one. And I think, I think the understanding is that this is the deal we have with the contractor who wants to bid and that that deal has a term.
Yes.
But, you know, the bid, the jobs are bid individually. Lainey, you see what I'm talking about?
Yep.
Yep. So we need to, we probably need to say. We need to have some, some term, some end of the first term of the contract there. We could do it a year? Okay.
We can decide on something.
Yeah. And then we have, you know, we can discontinue the program. We do have an out on this thing.
Correct. I just won't fund it.
No, but we can, we can.
Pull the plug.
Anybody else? Everybody good? Then please vote your machines. Oh, I'm sorry. We have one more thing. All right, back it up, please. Hit the restart. We do have one more thing. We hadn't put it in there. Y'all need to authorize me to be able to act on this. So we need to do.
Amendment?
An amendment to the motion.
To the motion.
To let me negotiate, act on it, sign a contract.
So I make an amendment to the original motion that Mayor Freddie Court had the authorization to act on the contracts that were provided by Iberia Cutting Up.
Motion.
What's that? Oh, I have a motion by.
Iberia Cutting Up.
Yeah, that's good. I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas. Who had the second? I really. Oh, Councilwoman Brooke Marcock, thank you. Is there any discussion on this addition? Okay, we're gonna vote twice? Okay, so please vote your machines on this. Okay, now it's amended. Thank y'all. And now I need a motion on the main motion. Councilman David Merrill?
Second.
Councilman Warren White, is there any discussion on the main motion? If not, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, 3C.
Resolution number 2592, a resolution accepting capital outlay funding for Facility Planning and Control Project Number 50 ML12501, Street Improvements Planning and Construction and Designating Jane Bro to act on behalf of the City of New Iberia in all matters pertaining to this project and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
This is a half million dollars cash that we got from, basically from the governor's office and his staff. It's wonderful, as well as our legislative, our delegation. So this is a half million dollars that we can spend on roads. Can't do any roads for half a million dollars.
Correct.
We have a couple of projects that are gonna have some change orders. We might use it for that if that happens quickly. We have some additional engineering to plan for the future, so it's not a waste. It's also the way this has worked almost, almost every time. When you get money one year, especially when they give you cash, in the next year, they, they expect to fund, you know, the next phase. So we got, we'll talk about some of the other money, but we got a lot of money for drainage this year. So my hope is next year, we parlay this half a million that we were given, do some engineering, identify some projects, which is not hard to do, and that we would be able to get much more money next year for roads. We're spending a total of 18, 17.1 out of the money that we financed and then another million from a grant we got. So we're spending 18 million. Seems like a lot of money. We're gonna run out. And we will not have, you know, it's a two-year project, but in two years, we wanna have done all the roads. So if we can parlay this into, let's say, three or four million more, then we can do an additional road program.
Got you.
So, any discussion? Okay, well then, housekeeping. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and I think Troy Como had the second. Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. 3D.
Resolution number 2593, a resolution accepting capital outlay funding for Facility Planning and Control Project Number 50 ML12502, New Iberia Drainage Improvements Planning and Construction and Designating Jane Bro to act on behalf of the City of New Iberia in all matters pertaining to this project and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Can I get a motion?
Move.
Second.
Councilman Troy Como, Councilman Ron Davis, thank y'all. This is a little over 4 million, 4.1 million that we are getting in drainage, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes. 440. Okay, okay, okay. So let's just say 4 million. It's priority five, so that means we don't get it this year. We can't act on it this year, but it's. Yeah, we get 440. We get of the, of the 4 million, we get 440. So that money, we will definitely spend on engineering. As you know, because we're still waiting on the $3 million grant, but we're gonna get it, we're gonna have, we're waiting the court permit. We're gonna have 3 million more to spend on drainage. We already had 4, 5 million. We doing good. And then this million, at least with the 440 cash that we get, we'll start doing engineering projects for the 4 million. And the 4 million's P5, so that means we do our engineering this year. We get 4 million more to spend next year. And we have a ton of drainage challenges. We all know that, but this, this is gonna be a big help. Again, I can't thank the state enough for recognizing that, you know, we were struggling and we needed these funds. Any questions or comments? Everybody good? Please vote your machines. Thank you. 3E.
Resolution number 2594, a resolution accepting capital outlay funding for Facility Planning and Control Project Number 50 ML12503, Improvements to Buildings and City Parks Planning and Construction and Designating Jane Bro to act on behalf of the City of New Iberia in all matters pertaining to this project and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Councilman Troy Como and Councilwoman Brooke Marcock. Okay, this is an interesting one. This is the sugarcane festival building.
Correct.
This is the building that we don't own yet, okay, that we cannot act on, that is sitting there dormant, sitting there falling apart. We have a verbal that the parish will give it to the city. We've been waiting and we are waiting on an AG's opinion. That is forthcoming, I believe. The state went ahead and funded us 3.1, do you remember? 3.2 million, I think. We actually have money because this has been, been discussed for at least a couple of years. So last year, we had 400,001 slot for the sugarcane festival building and another 400 in another slot. Well, it didn't happen. That money rolled over. Well, we will need that 800,000 dollars for the match on this 3.2 million. But the match is still there. We're in good shape. We have done some preliminary plans and budgets and, but it's not ours yet. So, you know, there's a lot of discussion about it. That's, you know, it's kind of become a political issue and it really shouldn't. It's 1950, really cool building. Owen Southwell was the architect. The reason it looks kind of funky is because it was designed to be a sugar mill. I think it's cool. In 1983, a very nice local architect kind of discoed it up a little bit. So, you know, it probably needs to be brought back to look a little more like what Owen Southwell designed. But it is a historic building and, you know, we all see the need. I mean, the dance teams are going all over the place. The Mardi Gras balls are shut down. You know, there is the potential to do much more with it, but it's, you know, gotta walk before you run. So we're gonna approve this. The state is not giving me the money. It says in big, big letters on the thing, once the building is transferred. So this is on a hope and a prayer that we get to take on that challenge and, you know, restore a building and put it back to use. But anyway, questions, comments? Yes, sir.
So, you know, we've been, we've been discussing this a while, you know.
About three years.
About three years. So I just think it's a very proactive approach on the city and the council to do something for our residents. And it's unfortunate that we getting hampered and our hands are tied by another entity. But, you know, we've always been at the table wanting to discuss it, wanting to move it forward. And we're answering the questions from all the dance schools and pointing fingers, but just to let you guys know that the city council is ready to take action and we ready to move on it. We just waiting on the green light. I'm excited about it.
I am too. I am too. Visited with the state, went over my plans, you know. I haven't paid him yet because he can't start the work till it's approved. I've brought a couple of architects through and we've looked at it. I mean, I, you know, I think we know what we're up against, but.
Got a question.
Yes, sir.
Some of the plans that you had that you put together and stuff like that, I'd like us to be able to take a look at some of that as well.
As soon as the building is a reality because, and we really would start with phase one. Again, gotta walk before you run. Phase one, I can tell you what, just off of memory, if y'all, you got a second? We ain't going anywhere. The air conditioning is shot. That's 600,000 dollars, okay? Maybe seven, but probably six. You got some fresh air requirements you didn't have before. Both units are shot, huge units. So let's say 600,000. It, the sprinkler system failed, okay? So we had some broken pipes. We have to make a decision. Do we put a total new system or do we just replace the pipes, change the heads, bring it up to code? There's no sound attenuation system in the building. There's a fire alarm. But for a building that size that holds that many people, you have to have sound attenuation, you have to have alarms, you have to have voice activated. We have to do that. If you go upstairs, the balcony rail looks cool, it's neat, but, you know, kids could jump through it. I mean, now you can't have any more than a four by four square, okay? So that would all have to be redone. The basement, you know, you wouldn't think. They called the basement, they're kind of like, oh, well, you don't need the ba- The basement is critical. When you do a dantracide or you have sometimes 300 kids and their mamas and their grandmas in that basement. Over the years, the basement had just ventilation. I mean, remember when the building was built, it didn't have air conditioning. It had big vent fans. It went up, they still up there. They're pretty cool looking. Anyway, so as windows got broken, they just boarded them up. So there's no ventilation and there's no AC in the basement. There's also some water infiltration. You have to deal with that. But if you don't air condition the basement, then you're not meeting its full potential. And, you know, you're gonna have mold issues, you're gonna have other kind of issues. So we gotta get some ventilation and at least temper the air in the basement, but that's more money, okay? There is some asbestos siding on the building, but if you don't make it friable, it's fine. You go down every house on Inde Street and Allen Street and all over, you know, all over town, really. And there's houses with asbestos siding on them. They're totally safe. You can paint it and it's pretty indestructible. Now, if you go drill a hole in it and make it friable, you start beating it with a hammer, you know, you might have some health problems. But you don't have to remove it, okay? There's a few roof issues. That's the big ticket items. There's many more, you know, other items. I can't say that the 3.2 million and our 800,000 dollars is gonna do every cosmetic thing that we want done. There's also some plumbing lines that need attention. I think we have some money to do some of the cosmetic stuff, but, you know, phase one is totally to get it back operational where we're using it, our kids are using it, we can expand it, we can rent it for other types of venues. So that's phase one. There could be a phase two. I did show it to some people with the state. Phase two is pretty wild, okay? We have, that building is not us yet, okay, the parish, has one of the biggest stages in the state, right? It's about half the size of Cade, okay? So if you did a smaller addition, you don't have to go up as high. You did a one-story addition on the back at some point in the future. You can do it cheaply because you make it look like a sugar mill. So you're using galvanized products, you're using galvanized sheet and you're not painting it. You can really play up on that industrial look. That's why we had to ask for all the property. You come out the back and you have two, a building with two fronts, okay? So you come out one story, you enter from the road in the back closer to Devil's Pond and you end up, you add stage. So you add equal amount of stage as you have now. Guess what? You got Cade inside the sugarcane. You haven't messed with anything else. You could do some big doors that close if you don't want to have the auditorium. You'd have 10,000 square feet of flat area. You'd have some restrooms on that side. You'd have a kitchen on that side. You got everything Cade has. I love Cade, great community. Well, you'd never have to go there.
Right.
That is probably 6 million dollars, okay? So if you take six, let's even say seven, because it might be four or five years down the road, 7 million for that, 4 million for the renovations, throw in another million, okay? You are still so much cheaper than you could even build Cade today. So in the long run, it actually would function. I mean, y'all know, it was my, it was my real job and, you know, I've been renovating buildings for 40 years. It is much cheaper, especially with these historic buildings that have a lot of amenities you couldn't afford now, to renovate those kind of buildings than it is to build new. So that's a phase for the future, but we need to keep our face to the grindstone on phase one because when we get to building, we need to move on and we need to move kind of quickly so that we can begin to have some revenue.
How many people get in the hole?
Oh, my God, it's thousands. It's 3,000 or something, as it is right now.
Okay.
The amount of seats in it are ridiculous.
Wow, okay.
Have we attempted to get any historic, uh, present money from historic?
It's, you can't really, you know, like the National Register is an honor and it's something good, but there's not normally money. What there is sometimes, even for governments, tax credits. And you can sell the tax credit. So it is my plan, if we pull all this off, to put it on the National Register.
Sell the tax credit.
And then sell, again, let's sell half of them. There's state and federal. I don't remember which one we can sell, but we can sell one, not the other. So you'd sell the, sell the, I think it's the state ones, but you'd sell the state tax credits and that's more money you could put to the bill.
Okay.
But there's potential.
So there's potential for it something. Anybody else? Okay, so we spent 15 minutes talking about something we don't really have, but it, what's that? Oh, you had a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did. Ricky hit part of it was dealing with the historic, you know, deal there. If we were gonna be able to get some funding for it, as I listened to you, the 3.2 mil and 800,000 may just scratch the surface.
It will get us operational and fully functional.
Fully functional?
It'll get us functional. Won't be beautiful yet, but it'll get us functional.
Okay. Now, even with that said, do you see this generating some income?
Yes. It, I'm not gonna sit here and say that year one, two, or three is gonna pay for itself completely, but it generated income before as a building in decline, as a building that was, you know, you look at the last few years. It will generate some income. Will it generate enough to pay for everything? Not at first. It, it won't. And it's, it's kind of. Uh, and it's, it's kind of like, and I don't mean this in a flippant way, it's kind of like everything else that we have. The parks don't really make money, the, you know, Public Works doesn't make a profit. Everything we do at this city is for the community. We're not a bank, we're not supposed to keep the money. So, the community services, now if you put in, and I'm not, you know, uh, I'm not an accountant, but if you put in that a dance team comes and then everybody eats and they fill up their car, if you put in that people come from out of town for functions, if you put in that the Mardi Gras crews come and they pay thirty thousand dollars just for the caterer, they bring in tons of other things, people spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars if you figure just all the costumes and everything, all that money is, for the most part, is local. So, if you look at the big picture, i- it's, it's going to generate money. Uh, the parish operated it since nineteen fifty up till last year, okay? So, there's a track record, so you can't say it didn't work. It, it, there wasn't reinvestment into the, and look, we fell into the same trap. You know, so, some of you have been with me for at least a term and then the first council, every building the city owned. We roofed every building, we changed every air, air conditioner, we changed every electrical panel. Government gets in this mode that maintenance is not the, you know, the hot top, the hot, hot thing to do. So, if it functioned from nineteen fifty till last year, or two years ago, I guess, I mean, there's a track record that I'm going to bet on that we, we can make it have income, we can make it, you know-
It's a promotion.
Be functioning.
Promotion for it.
I, I was just looking at it because, I mean, it seemed like you would have to promote it-
Exactly.
To get- Oh, I think we're going to have to change-
Especially with the upgrades and everything like that.
Correct, correct. And once you, but once you, you don't, you can't promote it when, you know, you can go to races all you want, if your car's junk, it's junk, you know? I mean, you ain't winning. So, I think once the building's renovated and once people see that we giving it four million dollars worth of love, uh, I, I think we have a chance to promote it and to think of other uses that it probably didn't have before.
One more question.
And you can help me with that.
Okay.
And everybody else?
The, uh, with the cutbacks that we've been seeing within the state, you know, and federal government coming down, you know, uh, seems like the numbers that's going upward. So, you feel this to be a good investment?
I do, I do. I do. Yes, sir.
I think, I think in, in simple terms, you, you can't put a dollar amount on quality of life. Uh, you know, if we're going to sit behind these chairs and try to promote our city, we need quality of life and, and this is just a huge step for us to in quality of life. And I don't put a price tag on it. I don't expect it to be money, but I expect it to keep families in my community.
Like our neighborhood parks and, you know, all the other projects we do. Yes, ma'am. Councilman Brooke Marquardt.
Want to add, um, even if we don't end up with the building, for whatever reason, someone needs to take it over and take care of it. I mean-
I agree.
Just as a former performer myself, we used that building so many times and, uh, just a ton of dance schools you, used to use it. Um, I just hope that everything can go well for us and, uh, quickly because this has been too long already. But, uh, again, if we can't have it, then hopefully whoever does have it, does something with it.
Hope so.
Quickly.
I'm hoping you perform at the ribbon cutting.
Oh, yeah, sure.
You open yourself up. Anybody else?
I'm not following that.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry. Everybody good?
Oh, yeah.
Then please vote your machines. Now, I can say we talked twenty minutes, that was something I sure hope happens.
Hey, Brooke, that's one for Freddie.
Every once in a while. She, she kind of sings me sometime. I got to catch up. All right. Item four A, Madam Clerk.
Introduction of Ordinance Number twenty-two-five-twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement binding between the City of New Iberia and New Iberia Health Services Incorporated related to New Iberia Police Department patrol and law enforcement duties and setting for public hearing on September second, twenty-two-five.
The name's not clear, but that's what they call it. This is our security contract with Iberia General. Because when you see New Iberia Health Services, you might not know what it is. Uh, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt and Second Councilman Ron Davis. This is to renew our contract for the security for our off-duty officers. Is there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The hourly, uh, that the hospital pays to the department, does it, uh, does all that go to the officer?
It does.
Okay, I didn't know if-
That is a perk for our offices and one of the reasons we keep our officers, that other communities don't all have that, we have a good amount of off-duty security.
Okay.
So, as a perk, they use the uniform, they use, you know, the equipment, they, they go in the unit. Uh, it's, it's a safe, you know, thing for the community, it gives a good presence, but they keep the money.
Okay, awesome.
They are paid directly, uh, you know, by those businesses.
Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else? Are you good? Please vote your machines. Thank you. Four B.
Introduction of Special Ordinance Number twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five-twenty, an ordinance amending the budget to provide funding for a grass cutting program and setting for public hearing on September second, twenty-two-five.
All right. This is New Iberia cutting up and I'm asking for forty thousand to get it started. Uh, in the new budget, it will be more, but this would, uh, be a way with the few months we have left to try to get it going. So, do I have a motion?
So.
Councilman David Merrill and who is the second?
I did.
Uh, Councilman Warren White. Is there any discussion on this one?
General fund?
Yes.
General fund?
Yes.
Forty thousand?
Yeah.
So, so, Mayor, the, the forty thousand that we're talking about, this is just to finish this fiscal period?
And I'm not sure how quick it's going to take off. I mean, it might be right at the end of the year, we start bidding. Uh, but I'm putting more money in the next budget. Whatever I have left in this budget will roll over to, to help fund it for next year. Um, I'd like to see that we had a hundred grand in the account for next year. I don't know that we're going to spend the whole forty this year because, you know, it's going to take a while.
Good chance to test it.
Right. But we got to test it. And, uh, you know, if it takes off, y'all know me, I'm going to hit the gas. But, uh, let's just see how that goes, you know? Everybody good? Please vote your machines. Thanks again. Four C.
Introduction of Ordinance Number twenty-two-five-twenty-four, an ordinance amending and reenacting sections ninety-four dash twenty-seven and ninety-four dash twenty-eight of the City of New Iberia Code of Ordinances related to owner notification for weeds and noxious growths and setting for public hearing on September second, twenty-two-five.
I need a motion.
Second.
Councilman Troy Como, Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo, this is where we were talking about earlier, that we go from ten days to five days and from six months to twelve, to twelve months. That's just making the adjustments so we can, uh, bob and weave a little better. Any questions or comments? Everybody good? Please vote your machine. Thanks again. Madam Clerk, five A.
Ordinance Number twenty-two-five-twenty-one, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at four oh-three West Armored Oil Drive from C-four Highway Commercial to I-one Light Industrial as recommended by the New Iberia Zoning Commission.
This is the old Coca-Cola plant and this is where they're going to do the SIP panels and the modular housing. So, I need a motion.
I move.
Second.
Councilman Troy Como and Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
I think it's a positive, uh, move for our community and I'm, I'm, I'm thankful to the, uh, investors and the, and the business people who are putting confidence in our community and we, we welcome them, uh, to come to New Iberia and be part of our community.
Agreed, well said.
So, I think, I think also echo on Troy's comments, but I think we strive to occupy these, uh, buildings that are empty in our community and this is just a win-win for everybody involved and, uh, I wish them the best of luck and anything that city government can do for them, we, we here to, we here to support them. But, yeah, I, I'm excited about it.
What else? Everybody good?
I did have my hand up.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I had my hand up, but Mr. Ricky stole all the words I wanted to use. No, we appreciate, uh, anyone who's wanting to invest in our community and, again, take up an empty building and make something of it. That's awesome.
Yep. Good. Nothing further? Vote your machines. Thank you very much. Five B.
Ordinance Number twenty-two-five-twenty-two, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at seven fourteen West Armored Oil Drive from C-four Highway Commercial to I-one Light Industrial as recommended by the New Iberia Zoning Commission.
This is the old Tesh Electric that will now manufacture baby wipes. So, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilman Warren White and Councilman David Merrill. Is there any discussion on this one? Yes, sir.
Yep, I just want to think if I'm coming into, uh, my district and to the city, invest in, uh, our city, you know, it's a great thing, like, the other time we said, the councilman said about the vacant buildings, we hoping to get them all, not vacant anymore, get the, use the space and, uh, generate money and jobs.
Yes, sir.
Amen.
Yep. Yep, and between these two, I think it's forty-three jobs, if I remember right. So, that's a good thing. Anything further? Uh, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Six A.
Bob Etta Lestrap, to present monthly budget to actual report from November first, twenty-two-four through July thirty-first, twenty-two-five.
Hi, good evening. Um, yeah, we have the report for, it's for the nine months ending July thirty-first. Everything's on status quo and I don't know if anyone has any questions on anything?
Questions, comments? Yes, sir.
I looked it over, Ms. Bob, and I did, as you know, I did get with you, so it looked like basically everything's on point and I appreciate you taking time with me to get a better understanding of it. Okay, thank you.
Everybody good?
Nothing sticks out to me this time.
I think we on point.
That's right.
Our new budget is going to be reflected.
Yes, working, working on it, should be-
Yeah, we, we've been working on it a bunch. That's been, uh, the last month. We've been on it and we'll bring that, the second meeting in September?
Second meeting in September.
And we're pretty much on schedule to do that. Good? A special meeting, yeah, it'll be a budget meeting. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, seven A.
Um, discussion related to adding additional streetlights throughout the City of New Iberia.
Okay, this is something I've been waiting to do. We have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars left of the CLECO money. Uh, it's in the P.D.'s hands, where it will stay and we'll figure out how we pay for what. Um, what I'm proposing is to start, we'll add each council person and the mayor pro Tim, we'll get twenty lights. Okay, so you'll be able to add twenty lights in your district. Now, the caveat is, we need to put them where there's existing poles and where we're not having to put transformers. I would like to do that to start. You are going to have some people that maybe have no infrastructure and will want a light. I'm not saying don't take it down. I'm not saying that we might have some money left or we could pick a few of those. Um, but to start, uh, you know, a better lit city is better for our crime cameras, it's better for our safety, it's better for our security. People have long wanted this. We spent over six hundred thousand dollars a year in our utility bill, all right, paying for the streetlights. We haven't added streetlights since I've been here. We never had the opportunity to have money to do that. This was in the CLECO contract, in the deal, when we got the money for the crime cameras and we did the fin- the franchise agreement, this was, this is, this is part of it. So, I'd like to start, like I said, with twenty lights. Let's see where that goes. So, the process is, I would like it to have some, if you don't give a deadline, nothing ever happens, okay? You know, if the people drag. So, in this discussion, I'd like your input. I don't think it's going to take long. I think you're going to get some calls tonight, uh, you know, by tomorrow for sure. So, it's up to each council person to, you know, weed through and, and pick twenty. Um, it's, it's a blessing and a curse at the same time because, you know, you might get calls for fifty. We don't have money for fifty. So, um, I'll open up the floor, but I think it's a good thing, it's a positive move. We're just going to have to manage it. When you have your twenty, send it into my office, we're going to try to compile it all. Um, our G.I.S. expert lady will, you know, kind of put them on a map so that we can figure it out. I will have to communicate with CLECO and, you know, on a case by case, I mean, so they know they come to look at a hundred and forty locations. I can't give them to them until you give them to me. But then I'll get CLECO come in, they'll look at all hundred and forty and we'll make sure, you know, we don't have any hiccups and, and we'll go from there. So, I'm opening up the floor, questions, comments? I'm going to call the CLECO man first. Uh, Councilman Ron Davis, who retired from CLECO.
Uh, well, as you say, we're going to probably start getting calls tonight.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, and, uh, I know there's, uh, ordinance on streetlights, uh, placement of, uh, distance, you know-
Yes, yes.
From pole to pole, you know? So, it's just, uh, I don't know if there's any other restrictions we need to go with looking into these, uh, streetlight matters.
Just try to do where there's transformers and where there's poles already. Okay. Uh, yes, sir.
So are we, uh, are we including, like, city park and pepper plex if they need, or are we gonna stay away from our parks and just look at residential streets?
Why don't we?
Whatever.
I'll find some.
I knew people complained about the walking trail.
With your help, I'll find funds for the parks, okay? I think the fair thing to do would do them all in the neighborhood.
That's right.
And then we'll just deal with our parks, you know, as we do in budget. I think that would be the fair thing to do.
Okay.
Good question, though. Yes, ma'am?
So the pole has to have a transformer.
No, there just has to be one in the area. You don't have to put it just on a pole with a transformer. But if you go and put it somewhere that there's no infrastructure, CLECO's gonna have to put a transformer, they're gonna have to put a pole, the cost is gonna rise.
Gotcha.
You know, a, a, a great deal. We might have a little money, m- maybe I come back after we run through the money and say, each of you get one, you know, one location with nothing, but if it's too expensive, we, we won't be able to do that, you know?
Do you know about how close the transformer has to be?
I don't. So that's why, once we have the hundred and forty turned in, I'll, I'll turn over CLECO, CLECO will send, you know, an engineer to look.
Okay, thank you.
And if we have a problem, I'll just, and we're not gonna have to do that, to wait till a council meeting. If I have a problem in your district, if there's one that is just a no-go, then I'll call you, we'll talk about it, and you, you know, pick another one.
Okay.
Yes, sir?
So how much time we have to turn?
I don't know, that's, uh, I was kinda wanting that to.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, okay.
Come out of this discussion. I mean, do you need a month? Do you need two months? I wanna, you know, I wanna give people time, so that's.
I would think sixty days is just a.
Like, see them up before the holidays.
So I'm open to whatever.
Cuz when one runs out of lights, he can call me, you see?
Yes, right.
Oh. Shoot, you only got twenty, you better be careful.
Nah, I think sixty days would be adequate.
Everybody agree with sixty days, is that?
Sixty days is good.
Is that good?
I just say one on two.
Sure.
I'm gonna start with that.
Okay, okay. Yes, sir?
I'm glad we got this money to do these lights because we needed that a long time ago. When me and you was on, right, I had one put on corner of Cherokee downtown, and we didn't have the money, and Hilda was, you know, they have the pole, but they didn't have a light on, and a lot of people was complaining, cuz that area there.
Yeah.
People were sleeping in their field and all kind of stuff like that. And, uh, we ended up having it put there, but that was the only thing we, we could've do at that time, man.
And our utility bill is gonna go up. That's not, you know. It's going up anyway. Uh, yes, sir?
Genet, are we gonna do a generic press release to notify the public so we can get information back, or are we gonna just do a bummer of the mouth?
I wasn't sure yet. That was something I can put on Facebook. I didn't want y'all to get overloaded. I wasn't sure, you know, again.
We, we gotta, we gotta let people know that.
We gotta do it in public, cuz that's our game, but that's why I bring it for us to discuss.
I think you gotta notify the public, cuz.
I already got a call for a light already, yeah.
Okay, so you want me to do a little Facebook post on the city's website, and basically says, we're looking, I'm gonna explain it. We're looking for twenty lights per district. Call your councilman.
Yes, 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 call your councilman. Not no other councilman.
No, but I mean, but that's why we, y'all tell me what y'all want.
Call the mayor's office.
Hey, hey, hey.
I got a question.
That's fine.
Okay, I'm gonna let you speak. You went first. Is anybody who didn't speak, yes, sir?
Yeah, so I, I actually have on my list of things to discuss is, uh, the streetlights that are not working presently, so I'm glad we, uh.
The PD, uh, I have reminded CLECO that they had, they do three loops a year, okay? They overdo the loop. Uh, we have sent the PD out, and if I'm not mistaken, the captain sent me, I don't know, three pages? About three pages, sir, and, and that's not the whole city. Y'all owe me the other part of the city. Okay, so I have the PD on the night shift turning in lights.
I, I turned some in a few weeks ago, and, and I'm, my ears are burning now.
Okay.
Cuz a lot of people are walking early in the morning, and, and the ladies are.
And as the temperature's cooling off.
Don't feel so.
Knowing time is cool.
Safe.
Okay.
So, um, but no, I'm, I'm looking forward to, to seeing this progress as well.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I'm assuming also, once we get the requests for the streetlights, that we will go in the nighttime, and make sure that these people really need a streetlight? Like, if it's already lit up enough and they just want a streetlight to have it in front of their house, you know, but you're out of lights, maybe, maybe we have to use our best judgment.
That's why I want the council members involved, because, you know, we're gonna have, we only have two, you, you each have twenty, so you're gonna have to shoot your bullets wisely.
Right.
Yeah, you, just use your judgment.
I mean, yeah, some places you could tell are super dark, like already automatically know of some. I just have a feeling we will get requests for maybe streets that aren't as dark.
Yeah, I, I would think so. Everybody, back to Ron, man.
Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming that the.
Like the talk show host.
I'm assuming that the LED lights are the same price as the other lights were, or.
They're not, sir.
Yeah, huh?
The LED lights are more efficient, but the LED lights, LED lights cost more. LED lights are supposed to save energy, but our bill is high.
They a lot higher.
So that's just a game, you know?
Cuz the lights cost more. I was, uh, asking the question because a lot of people are requesting upgrades to LED.
Yeah.
You know, so, um.
And I can't always do that.
Factor into this, sir?
Well, I can't always do that immediately. When the lights break, in the deal, they are to upgrade them to LED. But I knew this was coming, and I don't wanna spend all of our money. Some people have a light, and, you know, right now, we're trying to accommodate people who, who don't. So the upgrade to LED is not.
In, in some cases, you see the LED, then you see the old lights.
Oh, it makes a big difference.
It looks a little awkward.
It does, it does.
They are changing.
Asking about the upgrades.
Yes, sir.
If possible.
Okay, that might be later, sir. Everybody good? What's that? Um, Amber, so send in, when you get your twenty lights, or you start on your list, send it to Amber. Amber will do a little spreadsheet, and, you know, if you can't send them all at once, send them what you can when you can.
So not Laney?
No, not Laney, not Laney.
She made, she amended the motion.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We're not to vote on anything, but, uh. She might make it, she might make it. Okay, good discussion. Now we'll move on to councilmen's remarks, and, uh, Councilman Brooke Markot, I'll start with you.
Okay, I, I was actually, before I got here, thinking about what I was gonna talk about. And it's the dogs, but you're gonna hit on that later, right?
I am.
Okay, so I'm not gonna talk about it. I'll wait for you.
Okay.
I'm done.
Thank you.
I got just a couple announcement here, and it's not till October. I have pancakes and painting for the senior citizens. Uh, it's October the ninth, and it's free, and it's from eleven to, to one at the Western Park. So y'all be to, look for the flyer to come out, so y'all can register. Also, I have October the thirty first, Boo and the Berry. Y'all be at the Western Park. You know, don't make it safe for the kids, so I have to go around knocking on doors. You know, it'll be in the parking lot, they're gonna have a game truck, gonna have a fun jump, gonna have a costume contest. I mean, it'll be a variety of things for them to do, and, uh, it's sponsored by the city, and me, and Western Neighborhood Association, and New Day. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
And y'all have a nice night.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I'd like to send my, uh, thoughts and prayers and condolences to, to the fam, the Romero family, parish councilman, former parish councilman Glenn Romero.
Yeah.
Passed away recently. He was a, um, a good Christian man and a longtime volunteer in the community of Laurville. He'll be missed. He was, he was a good friend, so, uh, my condolences to his family.
Thank you.
Yeah, same, same thing with Troy. Me and Troy both serve Mr. Glenn, a great individual, made a huge difference in our community. But anyway, you know, far too often, we hear on social media, other people talk about progress in our city. If you sit here tonight, what about progress in our city? From drainage to dogs, well, he's not talking about dogs, but vacant buildings, you know? Inquiring about, you know, removing the sugarcane festival buildings, putting streetlights, and securing our safety in our streets. We making progress. We're doing what we supposed to do, and we want the input of the, the general public to help us out, but we're being a great, very aggressive, very active, and what we see needs to build our community, and I'm proud to say I'm part of it.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I wanna mention Neighborhood Watch Meeting is on Thursday night at six o'clock at the Sliman. I have Ms. Carol Whip coming. We were supposed to do this last month. The weather ended that, and we had to cancel because of the bad weather. And also have, uh, Panat and Corey coming out as well to go over a lot of things that they're looking at with the properties that they have available to build these little small homes to try to put people in affordable housing in those areas in New Iberia. And I also wanna thank the Omega Foundation for, uh, their first award ceremony that they had, uh, awarding all the people of business in New Iberia, different people. Uh, I was there to award the mayor award, uh, David Levy got award, and a lot of other people that were positive in our community. And I did speak also for a second on what we are doing in the community to let people know we are dealing with the drainage, and a lot of issues that you guys have, and if you have any issues that needs to be looked at right away, please give one of your city council people a call so we can get on it right away. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to piggyback on what Mr. Merrill said about the, uh, meeting at the Sliman. Uh, that's a chance to come out and, uh, get a little more information, uh, on the updates that we're doing within the, in the, uh, within the city, uh, and maybe even ask you questions. I'm sure with the grass cutting amendments that's, uh, going on, and, uh, you know, uh, some, uh, even the roles that's, uh, taking place, you know, and the other things that's happening in the community. It is a, uh, good, uh, resource, uh, for information, so, uh, please come out and join us. I, I will be, uh, with him on that meeting.
Thank you. I got a couple of things. The Ro Omicron Foundation gave me an award. Uh, I don't know that I was deserving of it, but it was, uh, a really good night, really good function. David, I got to hand me the award. A lot of great people, a lot of people were honored. Uh, it's nice like that. They just give me motivation to keep doing what I do, so I wanted to thank them for that. Uh, the next thing I'm gonna talk about is a pack of wild dogs. We have had issues and problems, and it's an ongoing thing. The chief's here. Chief, do I read our letter? Do you wanna read it? Okay, the chief and I put, I knew he was gonna do that. The chief and I put this letter together, uh, we sent it in, uh, both to the people that run the dog shelter as well as the parish president. Um, I'll, I'll just go ahead and read it, cuz I think this is an important issue. The purpose of this letter is to draw attention to several complaints received regarding a pack of dogs. Roaming Iberia Parish and the city of New Iberia created a nuisance as well as an unsafe and potential dangerous environment. These encounters pose a serious threat to public safety. After discussions with Mayor Freddie Decourt and gathering information from residents on social media discussing said pack of dogs, I conducted research, this is from the chief, uh, on the complaints filed with my department, with the most recent complaint being filed on August seventeenth. One of the dangers associated with the pack of dogs roaming are aggressin, aggression and attacks by the animals which can cause serious injury to humans, pets, and our livestock. Another concern is property damage by these dogs. At this time, I'm reaching out to discuss a plan of action for this issue. As soon as possible, I would like to discuss the contract services of animal control, specifically items one through nine of Article One of the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement by and between Iberia Parish Government and the city of New Iberia, executed on March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. It's the same contract that I signed in two thousand and eighteen, so this contract has been in place for a few years. While paying special attention to dangerous animals, it seems the residents are becoming frustrated with what they feel is a lack of response and resolution from, uh, on this from the authorities. The purpose of our Cooperative Endeavor Agreement is to handle these issues in a timely manner, utilizing the hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred dollars the city pays each year to parish government. As you are aware, the city does not have the equipment, dedicated, trained manpower, or facility to manage these animals, which is why we depend on the parish for these services, as does each municipality in the parish. Thank you for this attention to this matter. So we're on it. We are looking for a solution. We're as frustrated as everyone else. Um, when I got here as mayor in two thousand and seventeen, we paid twenty-one thousand dollars to the parish for animal control. Over the years, it went up. We now pay a hundred and seventy-one thousand. If you read the articles one through ten, uh, one through nine, I'm sorry, I'm adding one. I thought I was gonna bring.
You gotta copy the contract?
Yeah, I didn't bring the copy of the contract with me, but I thought I brought those. Uh, I guess I didn't. Um, there are nine, I'll give you to you what I remember. Uh, one of them is, they furnish an employ, uh, an employee for the city that is dedicated to the city to pick up the animals. They also have to abide by our ordinances. We do have a dangerous dog ordinance, but it starts with them. They have to pick the dog up. You can do a report, our police officers can go, but the dog catcher has to control the animal. They put it in the shelter. It has to be quarantined if it's bit someone, or even bit another animal, or, uh, and then we have a dangerous dog committee that the city has, and then they make a ruling on what to do with the dog. But we don't get that opportunity if the dog is not caught. Um, that's a requirement. We have so many kennel spaces, it's not a lot. The shelter is not big. I'm not throwing a stone at anybody. I know that the parish is in the process of spending a million dollars and building, uh, a new addition to their facility. Um, I think it's ten cages, if I remember right, uh, and then some for cats. Fifteen and five, okay, it went up. So fifteen and five. So that's our spots that are supposed to be dedicated to us. There are times, and I mean, I, I think they're as frustrated as we are, there are times we were called to pick a dog up, and they said we can't pick it up cuz the shelter's full. So even though we have, you know, I probably have fifteen dogs in the spot, we pay, like I said, a hundred and seventy-one thousand. Our citizens also pay to the health unit tax, and a portion of that the parish uses for, uh, the dog shelter. So in a way, our ci, our city citizens pay even more than the hundred and seventy-one thousand, um, but that's the only spots we have. Thank you, thank you. Couldn't do without my clerk. Uh, they are supposed to come after hours if we have an issue that is a dangerous dog. We're supposed to have appropriate personnel available for weekends and holidays for emergencies, um, when it's a he, health hazard. They accept the sole responsibility to regulate all activities while the animals are in the control of Ibera Parish. They reserve the right to refuse empowerment of dogs or cats that are unhealthy and may be unacceptable. Wild animals, livestock, birds, and exotic pets are not qualified small animals under this agreement. Cuz we have had a few times that we had a, you know, rogue raccoon or some other, but they don't do those. We tried that, and they told us no. So that ended up in the contract. The city's held harmless from all kinds of damage, of injury, personal, including death, which may be caused a result of the operation of the small animal clinic, uh, shelter, I mean, um, they have, uh, they obtain insurance. So basically, the city had no way to furnish these, to do these functions, so we made a deal with the parish and subbed it out. People are frustrated. They call, uh, call us out on Facebook and put all kind of things on there. I don't think they mean to, I just think they don't understand. There's been talk in the past that we didn't pay anything, that we were, we were there for free. Heard that out of some elected official's mouth, but again, we pay a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars.
Plus.
Uh, plus what our citizens pay in the health unit tax. So it is an issue. It's not an issue that's gonna go away anytime soon. For us, are the parish. Um, not, like, again, I'm not knocking anybody. They have a construction project coming, they got some money from facility planner, from the state, same place we get our money. Um, when they build the new shelter, the old shelter is gonna, as I understand, is gonna be used for quarantine. So that's gonna take up some of those spots. You know, it'd be great if you doubled the size of it and you could, uh, pick up twice the dogs and cats. I don't know that that's gonna be the case. There was talk in the past, I, I researched, trying to build it. I mean, I always try to fix the problems. I researched trying to build our own shelter. I can't, can't afford it. We, we, that's why we entered into the contract with the parish. So I just wanted to address it, that we're working on it, the, the PD's on it, my staff is on it, our, our council people. We are hoping to have a meeting soon and try to figure out what to do with this, this pack especially. And, you know, I know that once a dog starts attacking and killing other animals, I don't know how you, you know, you reform that dog, I don't know what you do. But, uh, I know that the shelter is classified as a no-kill shelter, but I also know that you can euthanize up to ten percent, and I really think that ten percent is there because of these animals that are rogue, but you can euthanize up to ten percent and still carry the title that you're, uh, a no-kill shelter. And I think that is the case, is because some of these animals, you know, that you're not, you're not gonna reform them. So this pack of dogs, I've seen them on the crime cameras, we, we've seen them on Facebook, you know, it's six or seven dogs. They, uh, they're all over the city, they're all over the parish. They, you know, you get reports on them all over the place. Some people have gone to filming them, and so it's the saga of where's the pack, and I've noticed over the last couple of days, they've been on Iberia Street, they've been on Main Street, they've been by McDonald's, they've been, I mean, they have toured half the city. Um, so they roaming all over, uh, they are a hazard. They, they've killed many cats, they've killed rabbits, they've killed other dogs. I mean, it's not something to make light of, so we are gonna have to deal with it, but the parish is gonna have to figure out how we can, you know, uh, you can set some traps, but dogs are smart. They, they're not walking into a trap. I, I don't know that that's gonna be the answer. But I just wanted people to know that we are taking it serious. The chief and I have spent the last couple of days talking about this. Uh, we've all talked to, you know, council members, we, uh, we see the post on Facebook. We're dealing with it best we can, but it, it, the solution is gonna have to come from the parish. Anything we can do to help, we're, we're glad to do it, but I, at this point, I'm not sure what we do. So I'll open it up, because it is such a weird issue, so we still in discussion? Uh, anybody got anything? Yes, sir?
My daughter and grandchildren lost a cat from that pack, and they, they mangled the cat pretty bad.
I bet.
And, uh, to death, but it was a nasty situation. But I would just encourage, um, people, when you see the dogs, don't call me. Call the police department, call the sheriff's department, depending on where you at, and give them the location so they can alert the right people to go and tend to them. By the time you call me and I, if I miss the call, it's gonna be a lot more efficient to reach out to the law enforcement and let them transfer the information.
And law enforcement will just have to make a call to the parish.
Right.
I mean, just to tell you that, you know, when you call the city PD, they, they, they're not gonna, nothing, they can't go pick the dog up.
Right, but somebody should be answering the phone.
But you would hope that when one of my captains or my chief calls someone.
Yes.
At the shelter or the person on call, you know?
They should respond.
Yes, 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 sir.
So, so my, my question is, chief, i- once we get a call in the PD, and y'all call animal control, are, are we filing with some accountability? Are y'all getting some report back to where they sending somebody out? I'm looking for accountability with this contract, cuz I'm hearing people say, well, nobody's coming out, nobody's responding after the PD, after y'all call animal control.
The contact is made from the communications, and, and we're keeping a record of it in our cat system.
But, but are we keeping a record of them responding?
Yeah, if, if they refuse to say they're not coming out, the dispatcher will document it in that ticket for that call. Animal control refused to come out, or unable, said they're not coming out, or whatever it is.
But.
Or if they, if they're responding, it's all documented.
Cuz what we, and what I'm asking, leading is that, I'm, I'm hearing from my constituents that, well, nobody showed up, nobody's coming out. I'm wondering if the message from y'all is getting there, but then it's from there, it's not getting to, to service our constituents.
Well, the other thing, they might not be calling. I think that all the posts on Facebook is when, I'm not being critical, but I don't mind if you post on Facebook, but before you post on Facebook, call somebody.
Exactly.
And I, I'm afraid, cuz we didn't have a huge call volume.
We, we had, we had, uh, one call, uh, on the seventeenth. Before that, it was, it was Facebook.
Yeah, so I think part of the problem is that they're not calling us.
Right, exactly.
Um, I don't know who they calling, and they probably trying to call somebody. I think there is a number that's avotage you can call after Iowa's for the parish, they might be trying that number. But I don't think that the PD is getting this big volume of calls, and I think that's where it should.
You would think so according to the, you would think so.
I would like it to start with that, because dispatcher get it, we have a record of it, uh, you know?
But again, with Facebook, of course, you gotta be careful, cuz everybody must air.
I, I get it, but what I'd like to see is them calling you, you calling them, and then find out, hold them accountable if they coming out. So we know if our contract's getting honored, in some kind of way or fashion. And maybe I'm wrong, Jeff, I don't know.
I, I would encourage the same thing that, that part about, uh, c- call our department so we can't knock them.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's a ticket.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am?
So I'll say that they are calling me, and, and I tell them to call the PD, because there's nothing we can do. It's so frustrating to have to tell people that we don't control this parish entity, but they do have to know that, and I'm like, but you need to call the PD so that they can call animal control to go out there. I just keep reiterating that, and every time I get a phone call, and I think that's what we're all gonna have to do. But those dogs don't look like strays, so it'd be great if someone does know who they belong to, to call the PD and let them know, because, I mean, they're never on a leash.
They don't have any collars.
Has a collar, one has a collar.
They have collars.
I saw the picture today.
Oh, that one of those black ones had a collar.
Yeah. They're just so healthy.
The darker, the big, heavy doll.
They don't look like the normal stray.
No.
So they're eating good, they're being taken care of, they're getting baths, I believe. Um, so I think they belong to somebody. We just need to figure out who.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
I had a lady that works with me, she had a dog running through her area and everything, too. She also has pets also. She has cats and all that, too, but she's concerned person about pets and stuff like that. She called me, cuz she knew I was on the council, wanted to know if we had somebody for the city does that, or whatever, and I told this parish. She called the lady, I called the lady also. She ended up calling me back later. But they were too busy to be able to get somebody to go out at that time, and from my understanding, they are shorthanded, okay? So that is a lot of the issues that, from, from my understanding. They're not gonna just have somebody most of the time to just go out there, just like talking about it.
Raise my own hand to talk.
I'm just saying, and I dealt with that for her.
Call on you.
Tried to help her out, and she appreciated, and the lady told me, you know, she was gonna try to do what she can and stuff like that, and, you know, get somebody to come out there, you know? So, I don't know.
Thank you. I, I do know they're shorthanded. Now, one thing I wanna mention, cuz budget's coming, okay? Uh, you remember the lady that runs the shelter who's trying her best, okay? And you can only fight the war with the, you know, ammunition you're given.
Right.
So for ten thousand dollars, they're doing a spay and neuter. Um, so for ten thousand dollars, they're doing a spay and neuter program, and if you remember, they picked the city as the, you know, the pilot program.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Ten thousand dollars, I looked it up today, neuters a hundred animals, all right? It's a start, okay? And really, the, the grand solution of this is spay and neuter. If you look at it, you know, you can keep locking them up, you can build a bigger shelter, you won't keep up. If you're not spaying, neutering them, and getting them off the street, or getting them where they're not reproducing, you can, you can build a shelter every couple of years, you won't keep up. So I would like to see, our finance person is gonna cringe, I would like to see us take twenty thousand dollars and put it in the budget, make a, make a deal with one of the local vet services, and there's one that I think is already doing this program, go cut a deal with them.
Mm-hmm.
And now we get two hundred animals that aren't reproducing.
It's a good idea.
So I think that it's worth doing in the city, uh, even though it's a parish, it's our issue too, I mean, we all live here.
Right.
So I'm gonna be bringing that a budget, and I'll have to find where the money's gonna come from, but, you know, that's, that's part of the trick of this job. But I think that if we contribute, you know, we, we might get other communities to contribute, we might get the parish to say, hey, this works, and put up more than ten thousand dollars. Cuz again, you won't build yourself out of this problem, you won't. Um, so anyway, that's just, I took my little opportunity to have a sales pitch, uh, I'll be bringing it back to your budget. Anybody else? Everybody done, everybody good? Well, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Thank you.